All right, it is just about six P M. On January seventh, we're calling the regular meeting of the common council of the city of Oneonta to order, and if they please call the roll.
Mayor Drennan?
Here.
Councilmember Moser Kimpulie?
Here.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Here.
Councilmember McHugh?
Here.
Councilmember LaFargee Chu? Councilmember Carson?
Here.
Councilmember Harrington?
Here.
Councilmember Forster Rothberg?
Here.
Councilmember Matheson?
Here. All right, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I'll let you folks know that our public hearing, I'll be looking at the clock, that public hearing will hit at seven o'clock because that's what we've advertised it for, and so we'll move around a few different things within the context of this agenda. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to ask Judy, if you would, to pick up our presentation on our grants update. And are you prepared to do that?
Sure.
Great.
We recently received awards of three new grants. The first one is on the wastewater treatment plant. We received a grant from New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, Water Quality Improvement Program for two point three million dollars towards our five point two million dollar wastewater project. Brian Seviga, who works for Wendell, our engineer on the wastewater project, encouraged us to apply for this grant because we're doing cost first removal, which is a priority for that funding program. So they addressed those priority funding items in their updated engineering report that they did for us as the first step on the project and assisted us with the application, and that's two point three million dollars. The second grant that we received was for our Oneonta twenty-three and twenty-eight Complete Streets Implementation Project. That's the project where we're putting sidewalks, we're working with the town on this project. We're putting sidewalks on Lettuce and Foster Highway and over on the town. We're making connections to the sidewalks from Home Depot down to Manor Hill and Home Park down to Walmart. That's a seven point six million dollar project. We already have a five million dollar cap grant from Department of Transportation, and the new grant that adds to that is one point six six nine million dollars. That will reduce the city's share to a little more than six hundred thousand and the town's share to a little more than three hundred thousand. So that's really awesome, just go over the city and the town. That's gonna make it safer highway. Lots of people walk up there, bike out there, and it's just gonna provide a lane on the east side, west side, sorry. I was gonna say left or right, not left or right. So on this side of Lettuce Highway, all the way across, so there'll be plenty of space for people to walk and bike to get across through their jobs, recreation, whatever reason they're going back and forth. There'll also be nice connections into Neoah Park and Cellar Park and that project as well. And the third new grant that we got, which I think is really exciting for the city and very timely for us, we are getting a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar grant from the New York State Department of State Smart Growth Community Planning and Zoning Program. That's going to allow us to complete comprehensive plan update. That's going to go out at the same time, completed at the same time as our Brownfield Opportunity Area Plan, which is focused on the railroad corridor. So both of those programs are gonna allow for a ton of public input and public outreach so that we really can see where people in the city wanna see the city go now that the D R I is nearly complete. So very excited about that. A question came up at our finance meeting about the smart growth principle. This is a smart growth grant, so the planning effort on the comprehensive plan update has to encourage best practices for smart growth. That includes, but it's not limited to, I'm just gonna read these off. Development in areas where water and sewer infrastructure is available, redevelopment of existing community and municipal centers, protection of important historic and natural resources, walkable neighborhood designs with multimodal oriented streetscapes, development around transit lines in the form of transit-oriented development, promotion of equity such as affordable housing and environmental justice, and the promotion of siting and development of community-scale clean energy facility. So all of that totals over four point one million dollars in new grants, which will help pay for projects that we currently have underway and also a new planning effort, which I think is really exciting for the future of the city.
Thank you.
I want Judy, that's just fantastic information. I just wanna open this up to counsel, Ben, but he's got any comments, questions for Judy along these lines? Done?
I just wanna say it's all good news.
It is all good news. All right, yes, Mike.
Thank you for starting the year with good news and wondered if you have any sense of the timeline for the process for those second and third grants?
Well, so we had the BOA for a little while, we had an R P out for that, we've had some responses to it, which we have not decided on with the administration of that program. Not the administration, but they actually doing the report, doing the process. Now that we have the comprehensive plan updated, we're in conversations with D O S to combine those two efforts and maybe might go back out with a new R P. So it's gonna be sometime in twenty twenty-five. We really need to have a contract in place with D O S, that's the one on the BOA. So I'm not sure the timing on this one. So this year, it will definitely start sometime hopefully soon. And the BOA is a five-year program, we're into almost through the first year. It took months to get the contract and then the meeting on that. So hopefully we can get everything well underway this year and have a really robust planning.
Yes, Mike.
Judy, I just wanted to go back to our agenda number one, which was about the Oneonta Theater. So we're down about ten days before that grant totally expires, the extension totally expires. Is there a point of contact?
I have the entire LLC is in point of contact right now. Nobody's responded, so I have to get back with them and see if they have an answer. They know the deadline is seventeen.
So you're trying to gather up a bunch of different people to tell what's going on?
No, I'm waiting for them to tell me that they wanna move forward with the grant and get the items that the state has requested by the seventeen. If we have those items, then we'll be submitting for an extension request. And they have, the LLC has not answered whether or not they're proceeding with the law.
Right. And if they turn this grant down, that precludes them from obtaining any more?
That will be up to the state. I think it'll be an uphill climb with the current folks that returns them. It won't impact the city's standing with the state funding agency, but it, because this is out of our control, but it will, it could impact their standing. They're going to have to show how they can make the grant work the next time, and they're gonna have a harder time doing that than they did for this grant.
Okay.
It's not gonna be, it's not a positive by any means for them.
Let me know if there's something I can do to help facilitate that conversation.
I haven't given the answer.
Okay.
We've offered to help them with the items, and I haven't heard anything back. So.
Okay.
Okay, anybody, anybody else have anything for Judy? Well Judy, thank you, really thank you so much for all your hard work and for the quality efforts that have come of it, so thank you. I want to, we have both Liz and Susan here from Wendell, and if you guys don't mind, I'd like to have you take the floor.
Sure, thank you for having us again tonight. I'm Liz Colvin from Wendell, project manager, working with the project city team and stakeholders on the market street transportation improvements. Tonight I brought with me my colleague and our project executive and principal at Wendell, Susan Sherwood. So I understand that there may be some questions from the council tonight on our request for contract amendment. We've prepared the information we believe may help inform you and clarify a few things we had submitted that, and so we'd like to, I guess, go over that tonight and take any questions.
So how would you like to go about it? You wanna, is there a presentation or shall we just take questions?
There is not a presentation, I think we'll just take questions. There was really nothing more to present or prepare. I guess I'd like to just confirm that everyone did receive and was able to digest.
And that's the case, everyone received and was able to review? So then let's take questions from the council. Does anyone have a question? Yes, Lynn.
Well, Elizabeth and Susan, thank you for coming down, assuming you guys come from Buffalo area and.
I actually live around that Syracuse.
Oh, nice, it's still cold up there.
We got like five years old.
In five years now? Well, anyways, thank you for making the trip down.
Absolutely.
I was going over the letter that you presented to the council for this, and it's on page seven of our eighty-three page agenda. And I just had a couple of questions. And there, there was a reference to a couple of presentations, and I went back and I actually, on our city website, the one, both presentations were on there. And in the June of twenty twenty-three, the council presentation, it said there was a base bid that did Market Street from Main Street to Broad Street, and that we wanted to add the alternate bid, which was from Broad to James Jorgensen's. And so a few weeks ago, we were told that the price went up because those two areas, those two ends weren't part of the original scope of work that they were added onto it, and that's why there was an added cost. But yet in the June of twenty-three, in the presentation, that was part of the actual bids. And so I was just trying to get some clarification on that.
Okay, so to clarify, the project itself, you're right, the base bid was just shy of Main Street, and so didn't take it to the full, right up to the intersection, was a couple hundred feet in maybe? And the documents identified where that was. So the bid pricing was consistent with the construction limits identified on the plans. So while we may have referenced it as Main, it's actually just shy of Main to Broad and then Broad to James Jorgensen. So the additional scope you're referencing, those were added afterward and were not part of the original construction limits in the bid set aligned with the bid prices.
It was a later add after the bids were received and contingencies and quite a bit actually into the process.
I know that the utilities were quite a hurdle to get through.
You were.
And I, and I had no expectations that we were gonna come, you know, truly under budget in that aspect because we were dealing with a conglomerate.
Correct.
And I know that they work at a different speed than the rest of us. But did the city bear more costs because of that? From your letter, it kinda, I kinda went away with the feeling that because of working with N I C E, it cost the city taxpayers more money to have your, your staff on scene because of, the utility wasn't clearly marked, there was more to it than originally thought.
I don't think I would say it cost the city taxpayer more money. What I would say is we helped the city through the process of coordinating and negotiating with, like you mentioned, the conglomerate of utilities. So they had to be dealt with whether it was, whether we were on this project or not. And so because of, I guess, our leadership and our consultant role, that's something that we helped the city team through.
Okay.
No, go ahead.
Obviously, I think there was a sticker shock, there was definitely a sticker shock on my part moving from one point nine to over three million dollars in services rendered. I tried going back through my emails to find out when we, as council members, were informed that those prices had, your services had been increasing. I wasn't successful, and that, that's probably on me, that I was unable to find that. But I think initially, for me, it was just a sticker shock of moving from two to over three for engineering services when, you know, from my, my perspective, I didn't know that we were incurring that, that much.
I, well, Louise, can I go in and, yeah, you got something?
Yeah.
So I guess my understanding was that, I don't know, some time, some months back, I think it was in, it had to be a few months back in twenty twenty-four now, where we had estimated our service fees to be up about two point five million, which I understood the council was discussed, the council reviewed, and then essentially understood or approved. I may not be using the right language, or motion, whatever you may. So there was an understanding, at least to my knowledge, that an increase in our services were already discussed at that time, although not formalized through contract amendment yet. And so I think what the letter does is try to help the group understand clearly the different aspects of that and, you know, the multiple projects we're talking about and multiple efforts between design, bid, and construction.
Yeah, and I wanna make sure we're all on the same page here. This project has obviously been in process now for eighteen months, two years in construction now. We, you know, the corridor, you know, road improvements, obviously substantially complete this fall, which it looks beautiful, by the way, we got to tour it today, it's a little cold, but it looks wonderful. And through that process, you know, we continue to work against our contract amendment, right? We are now at the point where we've hit that limit and you're not completing the project. So that's the problem, right? And as we added, you know, scope of work to the project, like onsite supervision, to make sure that utilities were appropriately dealt with and the city was not taken advantage of in that situation where we had inspectors and engineers out there making sure that it was properly coordinated for you. That has gotten to point out where this is where rest, the cost of it, the projected cost of it to complete now through the phases is what's important to you, and that's what the letter was meant to portray to you.
Sure.
And the project isn't today the same as it was even three years ago or two years ago. You know, they've made some modifications and changes throughout the bidding process to actually, in our opinion, save you money by phasing it and, you know, advancing the corridor project ahead of the building project and so forth, you know, and stuff like that. So yes, there may be some additional cost on the consultant side to do some of that work. You save significant money, in our opinion, on the construction side by eliminating a lot of that would have caused to the contract service. From the contractor's side.
Do we have anybody else who, you all said? Katie?
So I just wanted to say that, you, for me, I guess similar to Lynn, like, I know that we've been talking about a long sort of a change in scope, and would you say that the, would you say that the bulk of the additional costing incurred are from that onsite supervision? Okay, because I do remember talking about that. I think for me, this is not a question of whether or not you've done work at the value that you're billing us, it's really about establishing a timeline of when things were approved and understanding like our process. So to your point about whether we made a motion or not, I actually don't know off the top of my head whether we made a motion or not, or whether that was something that was just discussed. So I think understanding like, again, like, who approved the additional scope and when, whether or not that's something that council was brought in on. Obviously, there are at least a few of us who felt as though there were things that were added because we were under budget, but that we weren't necessarily, you know, fully informed about those changes, maybe at the time or prior to that, or fully informed about the cost implications of that because the project was under budget. And so I think that all kind of leads to the hesitance, you know? Especially because, you know, this ends up, based on our, you know, how this process happened, you know, in this case, while the project is still under budget, it's going to be, you know, an additional over a million dollars, which is like thirty percent of the original fee. That being said, you know, I do remember talking about, I do remember talking about the onsite supervision. I think too, one of the things that was illuminating from your letter was the cost of the initial, so as one of the few people who's been here from the beginning, like, I remember the conversations about the options and what we could have, and I think there was a lot of dreaming back in the day, and I think that that dreaming, now I see in your letter, kind of costs the city a little bit of additional money. And, you know, so I think, I would just like to say, to pinpoint that, you know, in the future, when we take on projects, understanding what our capacity is, what we're really going to be able to afford, when we're presented with options, so that we don't go back and forth and change the project several times because now, again, it's going to cost us, you know, not just that, but overall, the consultant contract is gonna cost us over, over a million dollars more than we anticipated. So I hope that council will kind of take that away from this. When is, so it's substantially complete, Market Street. We have, could we just get like a project update for like when this is going to be? See you later? I mean, and I don't mean that in a, like, bring you guys out of here way, but I feel like that's how it came across.
In a perfect, we're gonna give you our projection in a perfect way.
Yes, beautiful, yes, and that's all, that's all I'm trying to gather in terms of how much additional cost we might incur between now and then, right?
So the, the estimated amount right now, which is the increase we're asking for in the contract, formal contract amendment, right?
Right.
So, so I believe, I just refer to my letter so I don't misspeak here. So first to answer your question on time.
Yes, thank you, I was gonna circle back to that.
The Phase One demolition project was completed in spring of twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
So that was like just spring of last year.
Okay.
The Market Street Corridor Road Reconstruction and Streetscape Improvements, as Susan mentioned, is substantially complete as of, it was about Thanksgiving, November twenty-fifth was my letter, so twenty twenty-four.
And it is beautiful.
Yeah, it looks lovely, it's really nice. And then the Phase Two portion of the project, which is the nutrients and hub and the site improvements, is under construction with a move-in date, so optus move-in timing of September twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so that's still gonna be under construction through the summer?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, and then just to circle back to my first question, which I kind of then talked over, in regard to changing the scope, expanding the scope, adding alternates, what did that process look like from our side? Because I'm trying to understand, like, I know that we had some conversations about that happening. Obviously, we're looking at doing a formal contract amendment now. Possibly that's something we wanna do more frequently in future projects so that council is very clear on, you know, what the implications of our discussions are going to be. So I was just hoping that someone from the city could just talk about, because I know we talked about it a little bit at the last meeting, but just so that I can really understand our, our process.
I can jump in there. So just to go back to December fifth, twenty twenty-three, that's the council meeting, when the council approved all the construction contracts for Phase Two and the Market Street Reconstruction. That's when we also approved the budget, which is in the motion tonight.
Yeah.
Revision of that budget. So that original budget included two and a half million dollars for
Right.
architecture engineering. So that's, that's the point at which council approved, not a contract amendment, but the anticipated cost for architecture engineering.
Right.
And to your point, we could have gone at that point and asked Wendell to give us a formal proposal to change the contract, but we just kind of were moving forward with the construction, design process and trying to see where our costs were gonna be at before we did that. But we could do that more frequently. We certainly could have.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's, so if we moved, if we had an official motion on summer fifth, twenty twenty-three, for two and a half million, now we're at three point one million. Between then and now, how was council brought in on the additional six hundred thousand? Or was that just because it's under budget?
That's this process now. When we got to the point, it's been a couple of months now since we initially were talking about, what are we projecting our increased costs to be?
Okay.
And now we're here.
So what you're saying is?
Yes, to go from here to the end of the project.
Okay, so what you're saying is we are at the two and a half million dollar mark?
Correct.
Got it, okay, and now we're looking at the additional six hundred thousand.
Correct, in order to be able to keep our onsite people, complete the Market Street. There's, there's gonna be work in the spring.
Got it.
Even though this reconstruction project appears to be complete, it is not complete. It is substantially complete.
Right.
So we will be back out there in the spring with inspectors continuing to finish a lot of the pedestrian, you know, improvements, which are very important, obviously, to the safety, as well as the transit hub, obviously. So that is the get us from basically November last year to the end of this project. Currently, right now, we have site personnel out there that are out of contract. So Wendell's at risk.
Gotcha.
So that's why kind of a bit of urgency on our part, we don't, you know, we wanna keep our people out there, we wanna keep this moving, you know, because otherwise that causes other problems for the city that we do not want to incur.
Okay, well, thank you for taking the time to explain that, so that I understand it.
Good. Let me just jump in really quickly on your timeline for the Transit Hub. Because I know there are people who heard September and will want to know that the parking lot will be available much sooner than that. Can you project the, the timeline on the parking lot? We're looking at a hundred and change cars?
I cannot. I, what we, what we can do is, we're actually, so as a, our construction managers are onsite, our site personnel and our, and our management team, right now, we're working with the contractors on even further improving the schedule to, in hopes, finish a little bit earlier. So with that goal in mind, we have some meetings set up this month to be able to work together to do that, in which case, as soon as we're able to potentially nail down a timeframe in which we may be able to open that up to start to use in the meantime, we'll certainly inform our city project team with, you know, way ahead of time in order to get that set up and moving. Of course, safety being first and foremost, we can't have cars standing out there with, you know.
Sure, destruction.
Yes.
Sure.
And, and remember, you know, come August, July, June, June, July, August, you're gonna be looking at very heavy site work, finished site work, paving, concrete ordering. You know, your steel's going up right now, your cranes are gonna be gone at that point in time. But having pedestrians, vehicles, buses, and construction equipment intermixing is not in anyone's best interest. So it will have to be very well choreographed, it will have to be very well planned. But, yeah, I mean, as long as the weather holds and we have an early spring and we don't have snow in April or May, you know, and things keep, keep moving along, you know, from that perspective, you know, there's a lot of things that could happen, but construction is very weather dependent, so keep that in mind.
Well, the weather notwithstanding, we're going to rely on your choreography. The sooner that we're able to provide that many more parking lots, the happier I know our merchants are going to be.
Better will be, I do understand.
Sure, let me, Lynn?
So kind of along those lines, because that is a big bone of contention to the small business owners that are on Water Street and Market Street. Or is there, excuse me, is there more of a push towards the parking and the elevator system rather than the transit? Is the transit last?
In order of sequencing, construction finishing or.
Correct, correct. I mean, I understand that you gotta give a geographical footprint for construction, but is there, is it possible to have more of a push towards getting the elevator up and running and getting some parking? Is there, is it possible to have more of a push towards getting the elevator up and running and getting some parking in there for the small business owners?
Oh, it's a late elevator. It is possible. Um, actually, that elevator is one of the longest lead time items. Um, and so, and I'm talking seven months lead time. And so, we're hopeful, actually, we're, we're, um, optimistic that it's less than that. Um, some of our sources say it will be less than seven months, in which case, we wanna get that in to get that stair and elevator tower done. Um, because as soon as ready to use, we'd love to be able to do that. You know, remind, and just, this is a little bit more detailed than the council probably wants, but this will give you an idea into the world of where we live. We can't install the elevator until the space is conditioned. So if it's July and it's eighty-five degrees now, and it's not a conditioned space yet, that elevator sits until it's conditioned. When I say conditioned, I mean, it's temperature control and humidity control.
Right.
Right? So there's other factors besides just the elevator showing up onsite. We have to make sure the, you know, the utilities are working, um, at the same time. Um, it's a very expensive piece of equipment that we take very seriously. Elevators are always a touchy subject. So if you see it appear to be complete but not operational, that would be one.
Right.
So just if, if people in the, the city ask you that question, that's a very good reason that it might not be operational. Again, I think that when we do have our sequencing conversation with our construction managers and the si- construction, and the contractors, I think it's like a couple weeks here, counting up, uh, we will push that that is a city priority. Let's get this parking lot open. How can we do it safely? Can we not do it safely? And if the answer is we can't do it safely, we're gonna come back and tell you, we can't do it safely, because we don't wanna put the city at risk either, right? Uh, but we'll do what we can to see if we can do some alternative. I do, um, and i- is it correct that my understanding is that the spring, formerly the market arcade, is, uh, accessible?
It is. It is. Yes. Have we, uh, additional questions? Well, listen, Susan, I thank you very much, really do appreciate your time here today.
Actually, I'm sorry, can I ask a question? I just asked this in an email, but I'm wondering if it could be addressed now. The additional, um, the alternates with regard to the additional paving and site work at either end of Market Street, were those, when were those added to the project?
Um, to be quite honest, I'd have to go back and just check.
Okay.
If you're looking for a time of an actual month.
It's like timeframe, yeah.
There would have been a point. It was midway into construction, um, I did proceed with, the city proceeded with the, with the base and alternate bid, obviously, to do, uh, the majority of the street.
Okay.
And then, um, there were discussions that, you know, we're gonna have this completed street, and we're gonna have these kind of two, like, hankering ends, let's make it look uniform and consistent. What can we do here to wrap it all up and put that bow around it?
Gotcha.
Um, and so, I certainly can get back to you, but I do need to check my notes.
Okay. Would you say it was the, um, this past year, twenty twenty-four, probably?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So it was additional work after council had approved in twenty twenty-three, the additional half million dollars in, okay. Okay. And was that brought to council prior to saying, yeah, go ahead and do that?
As change orders, no, that was within, huh? I'd have to, I'd have to go back and check that as well. You know, our change order policy is if it's, uh, more than ten percent of the original contract amount, so in that case, upstate companies' contract, and or, or and above our overall budget, then we would bring it to council for approval. Um, if it's under the ten percent, we would bring it to, I'm sorry, over the ten percent, but within council budget, we would bring it to finance for review.
Okay. So maybe it was not to finance?
So at some point, there was review and discussion about it, but, um, yes.
Okay.
And, and just, just to be clear, I mean, the original, obviously, intent was to do Market Street from Main Street, exactly at the intersection, all the way to James Dorison, and in our discussions and understanding the project's, uh, changes, the need to demolish the garage, our concerns about overall budget, we kind of pared that down. So Main to James Dorison became almost Main to almost James Dorison. And then we also, the alternate Main to Broad and Broad to James Dorison. Given we got better construction pricing than maybe we were fearing, and, uh, we were able to try to really complete the project as intended, that's why we went forward.
I understand that, and I remember those discussions from kind of the very beginning. I think, again, just to bring it back, like, my concern is that our process, and maybe it's something where we need to look at the change order policy, but, you know, obviously, there was, it may have been within the scope of that for upstate companies, but now we're looking at upstate companies and Wendell, and it ends up being quite a bit of money that, you know, I feel like just the opportunity to review it and say, yeah, we're comfortable doing that, even though it's within the original project budget, I think would have been prudent. Um, so, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know that that's, um, a discussion for today, but I think it's a discussion that's been prompted by today, so I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. So, uh, again, no other, so a little bit of a, a false end for you, you know? Come back now with the, with the flourish. Anyway, again, I thank you very much for your time and safe travels back, you know, to North Country.
Yeah, it's actually, if I may say, it's actually really slippery out, and, um, the front steps of City Hall are very slippery. So as you're leaving, if anybody's leaving that way, please be very careful and, yeah, get back on your drive. We're, we're staying the night.
Oh, good. Oh, good, good. We're from Buffalo.
Because you know.
All right. Well, again, I thank you. Um, so what I wanna do at this point is, uh, we have a number of people here, I think, probably, uh, who are anxious, uh, to be, uh, speaking within the petitioners section, and I wanna provide you that opportunity. So, uh, we're gonna move to our petitioners. We'll hold off on the, again, the public hearing for a bit, um, but we'll move to our petitioners. And, you know, I, I kind of devised this system which didn't work, uh, which is, uh, where I say, well, you got three minutes or so, and I hold off something, says, now you got two minutes, now you have one minute, and now you have thirty seconds. But nobody ever looks at that because they're reading typically, or they're making eye contact with somebody else. So, so don't take this the wrong way, but if you get, when you get to about a minute left, I'm just gonna go, all right? Feel free to continue on, you know, um, but just so that you know, you're, you're getting close. I don't wanna be, you know, holding up pieces of paper that no one's frankly seen. That work? All right. So, um, so if anybody has anything that they would like to bring forward to council, uh, again, you, uh, let us know, uh, your name, where you live, uh, and you're welcome to either stand where you are currently seated or take a, uh, you know, wander over to the podium. If you have anything for the council, hand it to Don or, uh, to Elaine, and they'll pass it around. And with that, I'll ask anybody who's interested. Yes, ma'am?
I think I will use the podium.
Okay.
My name is Jackie Hunt. I'm a resident of Oneonta. I live at sixty-Sill House Lane. I'm the property manager for the Golden Plaza. I'm speaking on behalf of the owner of the Golden Plaza, who is unable to attend today's meeting, and is required to meet letters from there and the common council members. I am here to speak in opposition to the RSS proposal for twenty-seven Market Street to support keeping twenty-seven Market Street a parking lot for the downtown community. Efficient and convenient parking is the lifeblood of retail businesses. Without efficient parking, no business can survive. Even before the demolition of the parking structure, there was insufficient parking in downtown Oneonta. Demolition of the parking structure only leaves four hundred and thirty-three parking spots, additional spots, uh, left after renovation of Market Street. The new parking lot adds back about a hundred parking spaces. Twenty-seven Market S- Market Street adds fifty and sixty. Without twenty-seven Market Street as a parking lot, the available parking spaces in downtown Oneonta will be reduced by at least three hundred and thirty-three spaces. As the death of vehicles, tenants, businesses, employees, and customers of the used-use building, um, and the crisis becomes a disaster, and Oneonta becomes a retail desert. Vacancies at the plaza and downtown as a whole remain hot. Golden Plaza currently has seven vacancies. O K T is also leaving. A number of tenants also intends to leave the plaza if the, uh, our, so proposed RSS is approved. Main Street has significant vacancies as well, and the underlying cause of the vacancies is the lack of parking. A new subsidized multi-use facility which does not pay real estate taxes will also unfairly compete with the existing downtown property owners and businesses. In closing, replacing the proposed artist facility in the heart of downtown Oneonta, serving a limited number of people, is not a good idea and exacerbates the commercial vacancy problem as well as the parking crisis in this crisis. Rather than twenty-seven Market Street should be used for the purpose that benefits the Oneonta community, the use of the parking lot. A parking lot would serve dozens of businesses in downtown, hundreds of business owners and employees in downtown, and hundreds, if not thousands, of their current and future customers. It is the use that best serves the greater interest of downtown Oneonta and the Oneonta community as a whole.
Thank you very much, Jack. And have we anybody else who would like to speak? Here you go.
I guess if, uh, no one else is, uh, there is, um, for a, a bit of something.
And, and again, your, your, your name and where you live?
Yes, of course, yeah. Um, my name is Ben McGill. I live at, uh, seventy-two Maple Street. Um, I've lived here for about four years now, um, so not as long as any of you. I just wanna say to the last, to the point of the last person on, that, um, if we look at, um, other prosperous towns in New York State, if we look at, uh, places like Ithaca, Ithaca has probably two big parking garages, which are far enough from the main downtown strip, um, that you have to walk further than most of what's on Main Street here. And that, that town is quite prosperous. If you look at most cities in Europe, um, they, they were built many, as you know, a very long time ago with, um, density in mind as a, as, as a, as a way that, you know, to practically be able to get around, um, without having to walk or take a wagon for thirty miles. I, I find that, um, overreliance on, on parking can actually hurt, um, business rather than, rather than, rather than help it, especially in a town this size. Uh, foot traffic can help promote, um, you know, that kind of on-the-spur, um, market, you know, uh, interactions and create community in a downtown space that's positive, that's attractive to people and, um, and culture, which is, you know, also good for, for markets. But also, you know, the RSS building and affordable housing is good for the economy in general. Um, there's been a lot of studies about this, um, which is that a sta- a stable affordable housing provides benefits to both people of low incomes and local economies in general. For individuals, it reduces homelessness, uh, lifts people out of poverty, and improves health incomes, which is expensive, uh, to not do. There was a study in two thousand and seven about that. It improves youth education, which is good for the economy. Uh, long-term earnings reduce the likelihood of later adult incarceration, uh, according to studies in twenty twelve, twenty fifteen, and twenty sixteen. Affordable housing can help maintain health, daily functioning quality of life, and maximum independence for adults as they age, according to a tw- two thousand and twelve study. And it supports employment growth and stability, because low-wage workers are less willing to travel long distances for minimum-wage jobs. Actually, you don't wanna, you know, uh, spend sixteen dollars on gas when you're paying eight dollars an hour. Um, that's according to a twenty fourteen, twenty seventeen study. Affordable housing and rehabilitative housing are things that normal communities have. They're required for healthy social, culture, and economic well-being for everyone, landowners included. It says on the city website that we are a pro-housing community. It's actually how the city obtained some of its grants. Let's not give up a chunk of our economy and our good name for, you know, what's essentially fear-mongering about crime often, as I've seen in other town halls. We wanna be a nice, economically prosperous, and safe community like some of these other towns I mentioned, but these basic social programs are a necessity.
Thank you, Ben. Yes?
My name is Charles Gerard. I live on three nine one Chestnut Street. I've lived here for about two years. Esteemed members of the Oneonta Common Council, I have come to you tonight to show my su- support for the proposed RSS building on Market Street. I believe that this building will be an important step forward for our Oneonta community. We must extend our hands to those who need it most. That is what the Oneonta community I've come to know and love will do. I came to Oneonta two years ago, hoping to find a welcoming community. The people here of all backgrounds, political persuasions welcomed me as their neighbor and took me into their embrace. I am now volunteering at many local organizations and have begun attending local church. I've come to view Oneonta as home more than any place I've ever lived before. I strongly believe that Oneonta is a loving and neighborly community. I strongly hope it will stay that way. This brings me to why I am here tonight. The reports of vitriol I have heard coming from these meetings have been beyond disturbing. Reports of indifference to the lives and safety of our unhoused neighbors alarm me beyond description. The conclusion I am forced to draw is that national politics have begun to divide Oneonta from Oneonta and neighborhood neighbor. It is my hope that such a tragedy will not occur. As someone who is a person of faith and who is mindful of the troubling pub- probability that there are other people of faith who are post the RSS building, I am reminded of many faiths' most important teaching, love thy neighbor as thyself. It pains me to think that we may be drifting from this principle, which forms the bedrock of what makes Oneonta such a special community. I would ask us all, regardless of creed, to ask ourselves if we have been good believers lately. Finally, I feel it necessary to discuss how this will benefit all Oneontans. But it's hard to follow up my esteemed colleague on this, but I will do my best. The folks who will occupy this building will be folks looking for a fresh start. They will join us in our workplaces, shop at our stores, and participate in our civic life. They will join our community, and we will all be stronger for it. Therefore, esteemed members of the Common Council, I urge you to support the RSS building.
Thank you very much. And have we anybody else who'd like to speak to council? Okay, we'll see. Oh, I'm sorry, John?
I'm Jack Campbell. I live at Twenty Gardiner Place Apartment ninety-one here in Oneonta. Senator O'Brocker, who is supposed to represent his constituents by the appearance of community in our city as our state senator, I firmly feel that he needs to come to these common council meetings via invitation to hopefully address this issue and to come up with bipartisan solutions for the common council himself and any input from the community that he can take to the State House to hopefully lead this issue, not only for this city, but for other areas in our state. Unhousing, or the unhoused situation is detrimental, and I do hope the unhoused literally get the proper housing they need. And I firmly feel that Senator O'Brocker does need a proper invitation and say, hey, let's come to the table, let's come up with solutions that actually benefit this community, since I feel that he's been MIA recently for Oneonta. But, like I said, let's reach out to him and get his rear end here. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anybody, yes?
Hello, my name is Simon Reese. Now, I live on seventy Market Street, lived there for, uh, a bit of, about a year and a half now. So, you know, hope that my, uh, voice as someone that actually lives in the area can lend some weight when I say. Because, you know, most of what I come with is, you know, just support for, uh, ZEP to build the RSS housing here. I think, you know, someone before already mentioned a lot of it, but there, you know, virtually every line of data shows that it, especially in the long run and even in the short run, uh, these investments into building housing for, uh, the homeless population in a given city always cause broad social improvements, right? I think we can be so focused sometimes on the, uh, considerations of like, you know, immediate changes in property values or, uh, immediate loss of parking, that we can forget the long-term benefits from taking people who currently live very insecure lives, who currently live sort of in a constant state of, of panic in their, their social situation, um, putting them in a stable situation where there actually is a way forward for them, right? Because, you know, you know, as someone who, I'm very fortunate to get a job in Sydney, working as an engineer at Anthenall, you know, I know I wouldn't have get that job if I, for example, had to live with the day-to-day stress of homelessness, right? You know, this is something for You know, this is something for most of my life, I have been, you know, fortunate to be blessed with a family who go out to help the homeless, and that's something I try to continue wherever I go. And I, I've seen from their experience, from their stories, that when people do not have access to, you know, a basic need like the ability to have a stable shelter, that never, you know, that results in a lot of the problems that we associate homelessness, right? We like to associate homelessness with, say, addiction or crime, and we don't see that it's usually that homelessness, that insecurity that's causing it and not the other way around. And so, I think for the long-term health of this community, and I'd like to see personally as someone who lives on Market Street, I'd love to see, you know, a place where the most desperate people in the community, the people who need the most help, actually get it. I think it's a, it's a great way for us to demonstrate as a community, as a city, that we have the interest of all Oneontans in front of our mind, not just the obvious and the most popular. Thank you. Hope you continue to give.
Thank you very much. Ben?
My name is Sam K., and I live at Seven Normal Avenue here in Oneonta. I've lived here for a long time, twenty-two years, I think. And I love this town. It's a marvelous town. It's a wonderful place to be, and I feel very lucky to be here. I feel lucky that there are so many people that care on the Common Council about the direction and people in the community, and I'm so happy for that. I just want to share with you that last year, I believe, I became concerned as I listened to some of the council. And so, I went and spoke with the people at RSS, and they took the time to present to me all of the information they have, and it's very, very helpful, and I think they would do that for all of you, again, if you would like. It talks about, this is, this housing is not for desperate people. This housing is for people that are ready to get jobs, to be employed in the community, but those people can be taken out of housing that can then be available for people who are desperate, like the homeless shelter. So, this is not a place that's going to add housing for desperate people. It's not that way at all. It creates a layered impact of housing, which is one of the better ways for housing in a community to be constructed. That's a strong housing level, when you have housing for these people and housing for this level and housing for this level. And RSS will share with you, they did the studies, and there are studies on, on the impact of all of this also, which could be shared. I think it's really important not to get sidetracked into the, just the emotion, this is not what I want or this is what I want. It's important to look at what actually happened, which there was information asked for independently. There was an opportunity for the people to comment, and, but there was also COVID. And so, things happened that we have forgotten, and I think it's important for us to go back and look at that, and perhaps RSS could answer some of the questions that are coming up. Parking is critical. We have to support our local businesses, but it doesn't necessarily, I think it's a great point that if everybody drives to the store and then gets in their car and leaves, that you don't have as much community. So, anyway, I just think it's wonderful that people care, and, and I think RSS could help us make intelligent decisions here.
Thank you, Sam. Hey, anybody else who'd like to speak? Okay, well seeing no hands, I'm going to close the petitioners section, and I'm going to ask about correspondence. We have no correspondence, and we are about seven minutes away from seven o'clock, which is when we will move to our public hearing. So, to take us there, I'll ask Scott if you would provide us with an update on the Quality of Light and Infrastructure Committee.
Yes. I don't like my new glasses, so we're a little here. Still trying to use them. We met Monday at five o'clock, well, just yesterday. First thing we talked about on our docket was the D Street parking lot evaluation recommendations. This has been kind of an ongoing conversation for a little while now. Yeah, so city staff with Chris Akabuchi and Greg Matheiser, city administrator, take a look at this and come back with some recommendations, because there were concerns about coming out of the driveway, more or less, closer on to the Main Street side. So, they did a review, they used a DOT review tool, which isn't really designed a hundred percent for what we asked for, but it was the best to keep a contingent, consistency that we were trying to look for. And it came back that we need to, for line site, remove two parking spots to make it for safety for coming out. We agreed with that, and we're going to send it up to the next council meeting for, for consideration. The pedestrian accommodations, that's what we were asked for, we're looking at ADA accommodations closer to Wall Street and D Street. We're talking about the cast iron bumps as you come down, so they know where they're at on the sidewalk, crosswalks, paintings. Chris thinks he's got that in his budget for this year, and he's going to add that on to the list of sidewalks and stuff that he's going to do. In handicap parking, we actually asked to do, we're actually going further, because we do need ADA compliance for our handicap parking spots in the D Street lot as it is. We have six out of the hundred and fifty spots that we got, and we don't know how often they're being used, and if it's just residents that are parked there that they want them, or if it's a, so we're going to look more at this, do a little bit of a studies throughout a couple of months, see how it goes, and we're also going to look at Main Street itself, if we need to actually put more, I don't know, handicaps parking on just Main Street itself. So, we're going to look at it as a comprehensive thing, not just a tunnel vision on, on one shot, try to alleviate some concerns that we're having. We talked about the watershed trails on city property. We're going to ask Mike, when he gets his feet underneath him, to do a little bit of a presentation about the watershed properties up around the reservoir and stuff, because we understand you've been working pretty hard on it, and we'd like to hear from you. So, sometime, if you got your feet under you, we'll put it on the agenda. We also heard a request for incorporating Benavista as a city street. Right now, it's a private, private road, if you, I guess, lack of better terms. That's going to take a lot more work, because we don't know all the issues that they're having. We know they got drainage issues, we know that it's not meeting, doesn't meet our requirements to take it over. It's also a private, and that would include our city attorney's advice, and so we're going to reach out to him at some point before we discuss anything else, what it, what it would take, what has to happen. We also discussed parking fines, that, that we want to, we want to get compliance, and we were talking about that the fact that it might be a little bit low is why we're not getting compliance. We really focused up around the East, East Street issues that we've been having with parking, and the concerns from the residents up there for both walking and how it's hard to get across the street, and concerns for people trying to get their, drop their kid, their kids off at the school and stuff. So, we're, we're looking at maybe trying to make a, first thing we want, I would like to do, kind of discuss was make parking its own in our fee schedule, instead of lumping it on all those stuff that actually haven't broken out by itself. And then, so we're going to look at the fines and see if, you know, twenty dollars is that really, you know, deterrent or not a deterrent, and I think the city's going to pull some data for us, we're going to watch it over the next couple of months, I think it was March, yeah, March, that they're going to come back with us with some data on where we seem to be having the biggest problems and what we might be able to do to get proactive and try to help our residents out. And we talked about bicycles, with some complaints about bicycles and the e-bikes and the hoverboards, whatever they're called, mechanized equipment going up and down our sidewalks, we're going to come back and we're going to revisit that some more. We got some questions for the city attorney, which I have not had a chance to, to talk to him yet, so, from those questions about how to, how enforcement, if we have stuff like that, so. And I felt like there was something else. Cecilia Lane, what am I forgetting?
Just that in addition to our East Street discussion about speed and sort of density of cars versus pedestrians, we also talked about the possibility of looking into having some kind of study done about having a stop sign at the corner of East, Bugby, and Meadowbrook, maybe, there, so that was, yeah, sort of an add-on discussion.
Yep. What else? It's a pretty light agenda.
Didn't have a lot on it, but it was a, it was a...
Kidding. Questions for, for, yes?
I have a question. So, Scott, you talked about eliminating two parking spots on D Streets in front of the lofts where they entered from the parking lot, one on each side of the exit?
Yes, one, as you come out, you want on the left, one on the right.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a position.
Yeah, that's actually, you got a drawing in your emails too, if you want to.
Yeah, I can see that. I just wanted to make sure I, then when, will we be voting on that now, or?
That would be not, this meeting is going to be next council meeting.
Cecilia?
Yeah, I just wanted to actually just provide for the purposes of, of, I guess, the public, really, to clarify the context for that discussion, that it was really about, we had heard from residents in the D Street lofts prior, at a prior meeting, and they were very concerned about the kind of traffic safety in that area, and so this was a solution to that, to those concerns. So, we were really addressing residential concerns about traffic. It's not just about the removal of these parking spots. I just want to clarify that.
No, I understand, but when you're pulling out from the parking lot, you can't really see.
Yeah, right. There's been at least one collision reported, so, yeah, that's part of the reason to respond to that.
So, there's residents who are very concerned about it.
Yeah, makes sense.
Anything further?
Yeah, I was hoping that you could elaborate a little bit on, you were saying that we're going to kind of collect data until March, like what, could you just elaborate more on that?
Yeah, so, so we wanted to see where a lot of our primaries are, or we keep going back to them, to those areas, like we were talking about East Street, we get a lot of complaints about the East Street.
Okay, I was wondering if it's like citywide or not East Street proper?
Yeah, I asked Greg if that was something that we could pull data, how hard it would be, because we didn't want to put a lot of more work on our staff, but we kind of need the data to be able to move forward, what kind of recommendations we do. He said that was, because they track it with their ticket machine.
Yeah, as far as what parking tickets are issued, where, frequency.
Yeah.
Can make a map and table, informative, I think.
Okay, I mean, that does depend on where the parking enforcement officer is, is at any given moment, where they're directed to be, or that kind of thing, so I think that's just something to keep in mind.
Right.
It's more wanting to get it over time to get an idea of like density and trends that we might see throughout the city, and so that was the, that was the idea with that.
Yeah, I mean, what I would say is that I know that I have had some complaints on some of the smaller, like, hilly streets in my neighborhood that I don't think are being ticketed with as much regularity as like, for example, Center Street, I think I mentioned, like, at six oh five, you have a ticket, so I don't know that time will necessarily balance out the data, which is why I wanted to mention that I think that there are, you know, some kind of regular areas of targeted enforcement, and, you know, just to keep that in mind when you're reviewing whatever you get back from March.
That's, that's, we're looking at the data, it's a whole other thing we're trying to, you know, like if we're hitting, say, the East End more than, say, you know, Center City or something like that, is, you know, but we also have to go like where the population is, where the complaints are, where's, you know, where we're getting at. And we, we only got one parking enforcement officer, but we figured this was a good time to start doing it, because we're, we actually have a parking enforcement officer that's dedicated to it, and, you know, I don't know if the city PD still gives out parking tickets, I'm assuming they probably do, and I think that data could probably get rolled into it where they're doing it, so, you know, maybe it'll help us with times, what times we're seeing more, more of the violations versus, you know, so that, you know, it'd also help us maybe if we're trying to come down through and do signage, or if we're going to try to push traffic on one side, you know, park on one side to free up and stuff like that, so, you know, we're just trying to take a global look at it versus trying just to, to do little spots here and there and we actually make it worse.
I think that makes sense.
Yes, Lynn?
So, I just wanted to talk about Benavista. So, what is your subject matter timeline that you're thinking of? And I guess, and when you answer that, just, have we reached out to the property owner?
We have not reached out to anybody yet. This just came Monday night, and I, before we reach out to anybody, I want to have a conversation with the city attorney, and also trying to get criteria, but I don't know a hundred percent what our criteria is for the city street. Most of the time when we take over a thing, it's already made to city specs.
Right.
Because you're talking, you know, millions of dollars for us to come in and do it. So, there's, there's a lot of conversation. We didn't, I, I told, I can't remember her name that was here, that, what is it?
Moye Morant.
That we're going to, it's, we're going to keep discussing it, but it's not something that we're going to have an answer for the next, like, two weeks, three weeks. It's going to take some time for us to, to get through the process and see, you know, overall, because the other thing is they're talking about drainage issues and this issue and that issue, and I want to make sure we know all the issues before we, as we tackle this, we can have a comprehensive dollar amount if we decide we were even going to try to attempt this.
Right, I mean, the primary issue is stormwater. It's not the actual street, it's about stormwater, because those downhill neighbors are inundated every single year. And the city has tried to eliminate some of those issues on Morgan before they made some cut-throughs, and so it's, it is a challenge coming up the hill, so, I just kind of wanted to know where you guys were headed with all this.
Not getting swept under the rug. It's, we are going to be looking at it, it's, it's going to take us a little bit, like I said, my first step was to, like I said, I haven't had a chance to talk to me as our city attorney, is what, what are the next steps? What have we got to look at, what are we going to be concerned with, let's, so that we keep, you know?
Yeah, I, I think you're right on, Scott. Just take it at the pace it needs to be taken, make sure you've gotten everything squared away and tied up before you get out in front of yourself.
Anybody else with a question or comment for Scott? All right, that brings us about eight minutes past our designated time for a public hearing, but close enough, I think. And so with that, Judy, would you do me a favor and, and explain to folks why it is that we're in fact even having this public hearing and what this is about?
We have community development grant program grants. One of the requirements when you have those grants is at some point during administration of the grants to all the public hearing, so that we can provide an update on, on the process and progress and to cure concerns or questions from the public. So, those three grants are a lead service line replacement grant program, which is for single and multifamily homes. It's two hundred and five thousand eight hundred dollars. We are wrapping that program up at the end of this month. It will have completed lead replacement lines for four single-family homes and two multifamily homes. There was a pool of about a hundred and thirty-four properties that were identified as having lead lines. We've reached out to them a number of times, and as a result, we were able to replace six of them. We will have a balance that will be returned to the state when the program is finished. I don't have that number yet until it's done. The second grant is a single-family housing rehabilitation grant. It's five hundred thousand dollars total. We can make improvements for income-eligible homeowners for single-family homes. We can make repairs to those homes and, sorry, some weatherization improvements. We hope to be able to work on approximately thirteen single-family homes. That grant expires in January of two thousand and twenty-six. We're currently accepting applications on that, so we've been marketing it, and we're going to continue to market it. The third program is the micro-enterprise program. We have a two hundred and thirteen thousand dollar grant, which We have a two hundred and thirteen thousand dollar grant, which provides a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in direct grants to very small businesses, meaning that it's businesses with five or fewer owners and employees at the time of application. The grants can be between five thousand and thirty-five thousand dollars for working capital costs, cost of doing business, for equipment that stand alone that can be removed, nothing that is attached permanently and is not for building renovations. We recently awarded three grants totaling eighty-seven thousand five hundred to three small businesses in the city. We have about ninety thousand dollars remaining and we're going to be offering another round of debt funding here soon. That grant expires July twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-six.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Judy. So now the official reading of this for the public hearing. CDBG eight four seven SW three two seven dash twenty-two, lead water services replacement for two hundred and five thousand eight hundred dollars. CDBG, CDBG eight four seven HR three two one dash twenty-three, single family housing rehabilitation for five hundred thousand dollars. And CDBG eight four seven ME five five seven dash two four, micro enterprise assistance program for two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And we'll open up the floor to anybody who has a comment. And seeing none, we will close our public hearing. So thank you all for bearing with us as we played with the clock on that. And thank you very much, Judy. We'll now move to our second of our committee reports. And Cecilia, if you would, Finance and Human Resource Committee.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So we had a full docket of items and topics and which we distributed to the consent and discussion agenda. I think the highlights were hearing from Judy Pangman about the millions that the city has received recently in grants. And so we got the update that you heard tonight. In addition, we also heard from, we also discussed early on in the meeting. We had an extensive discussion about the parliamentary procedure, the standard code. And so we discussed the possibility with both committee members and then the, a couple of council members who were also in attendance at the meeting. We discussed a couple of possible strategies. One, we were going to make sure and contact our trusted lawyer about the rules. We talked about the possibility of moving this to a legislative committee for discussion. And we talked about the possibility of looking at what other cities do for their procedures and that we don't necessarily need to follow this, this particular one that we have been using, that there's space and room for looking at other policies, we can even create our own. There was a discussion briefly of looking at, and the city clerk made mention of NICON having webinars available to look at what other procedures may be available to city council throughout New York. And so we just sort of opened it up for discussion and we're going to discuss it further as a discussion item later on. So that was really kind of the big, the big item that we focused on.
Okay, thank you very much, Cecilia. Are we any questions or comments? All right, well, again, Cecilia, thank you very much. And with that, I think we are caught up and we'll move right into our approval of warrants. With motion number one, that the common council approves the warrants totaling eight hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. And the same be placed on the finance director's desk for payment as presented. Do I have a motion to approve? I've got Don. Do I have a second? I've got Elaine. And do please, we can call a vote.
Councilmember Moja Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McQ?
Aye.
Councilmember Laparishu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington? Councilmember Forster Rothberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
Terrific. Well, that brings us to the consent agenda, which are motions two through fifteen, as you have in front of you. And if I have a motion to approve, do I? Scott? Followed by Don. And we can take a vote on that.
Councilmember Moja Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McQ?
Aye.
Councilmember Laparishu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forster Rothberg?
Yes, with the exception of I can do it without abstaining on...
Nope.
I do.
All or nothing.
Okay, and yes.
Or you can abstain from all of them.
That's okay, I'll just vote this.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, that brings us to the city, yes, Don?
Could you explain to Mike how you remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, yes, I do.
Thanks for playing. I love the peer-to-peer mentoring stuff going on. It's great. It's good. All right, so I'm going to take this now and move it to the city administrator for your report, please.
Thanks, Mayor. It'll be relatively brief. We have police officer interviews starting soon. We do have a list with at least nine candidates, looking to fill five current vacancies. We're starting the interview process now because we have the academy starting in late March. So that gives us time to hopefully hire some new police officers by then. We did have an employee retirement at the end of, actually, December thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Kathy Winans, OPT bus driver. She'd been a part-time and/or full-time driver in a couple different stints over sixteen years in OPT. She wasn't able to attend tonight, otherwise we could be handing her her plaque tonight, but she did get that from Dave O'Toole. I think she's already moved out of the area. But we thank...
She's in North Shore Lane.
It's a little too cold right now. But we thank her for her awesome service. Obviously, as you may know, tax collection started the end of this month, Friday, January thirty-first. It's the last day without penalty. So if you're mailing it in, it needs to be postmarked by that date to pay online. Folks can go to taxlookup.net and just find the city of O'neant's under Atsego County. We collect taxes through April and then at that point, once we hit May, we return any unpaid tax bills to the county for tax enforcement. Water and sewer bills will be sent out likely the end of February or, or early March. Those are due by April thirtieth. We collect those through the end of October and then send them to the county for relettees, anything that has not been paid. Recently, DPW had noticed a little bit higher than average consumption in our low service area of our water system. So we've, we did some investigation on our own and couldn't find the source. So we hired New York Fleet Detection to come in and do a survey of our low service area. They did find a couple of leaks, one on Luther Street, one near Ford Ave. in Linden. A private leak at Motel eighty-eight on their service. And they have another day to complete the rest of the system to see if there's anything else out there. Moller Plaza Van Stan, remember, we awarded that contract, I believe it was December or November. And we have that contract executed. Submittal review should begin soon and we anticipate completion on schedule by early June. And the tree trim removal contract, you may have seen them around in Wilmer Park elsewhere in the city. That's about three quarters of the...